I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, and liberty, and justice for all.
Thanks for your assist.
Thanks, everybody.
I had trouble with that.
So I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for Tuxedo Farms' major subdivision review. Can I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Before I turn it over to Ashley, I just want to say that this is just for the commons area. And the subdivision item is really changing six lots into 14 lots. That's really what's on the table here. So Ashley, if you want to give us an update as to where things are for the benefit of the board and any people on the call.
So, as mentioned, we are here for site plan and microphone. Sure. Thank you. We are here for site plan, subdivision, and wetland permit approval for the commons area. We plan on coming back for ARB for the first four buildings in short order. As you know, we were before the town board on Monday night, and they approved some minor amendments to the special permit, which is going to allow this board to consider granting site plan approval in advance of the ARB approval. They also made the requested amendments to the road hierarchy plan, so we can make those changes to the road list that we had discussed with this board previously, and some of the other cleanup items that were in the SMART code. So we do have a design team here today, and we're happy to go through the slides that we went through at the last meeting for the benefit of any members of the public that are here and for the board. If there's no members of the public, we could do an expedited version.
That might be appropriate, because I don't... How many people are...
We have five, six participants.
Okay. So maybe go into a little more detail then.
Okay, sure. And I think some are from for the project.
All right, thank you, everyone. Paul Malon of Hard Howerton. As you know, we've been meeting the master plan, as well as the design of the buildings within the commons. And I just wanted to review with you the design drawings. Most of you at this meeting here are persons who've seen these drawings before, but we'll go through for anybody who hasn't seen them. And as Ashley had mentioned, we're here talking about the commons area, including Quail Road from 17, the north entrance up to the commons, and then back down through Slotsburg, back down to 17.
Ashley, could you just show where the commons are?
Yeah, so the commons area is this area in blue right here. So this is the area right here in the commons. And we would be seeking approval for Quail Road in the town of Tuxedo. So starting at 17, coming all the way up, and then ending at the town line. And we are seeking amended site plan approval for Quail Road in the villages of Slotsburg.
And as we've mentioned in previous presentations, the commons is really the heart and soul of our community, and we hope will become a cherished part of the larger Tuxedo community. And it is the place where we have civic buildings, we have mixed-use buildings, we have commercial buildings, and we have multifamily residential buildings. And if we click to the next, go back to the scale, and then... This is a design drawing that really begins to establish the vision and intent for the commons, as well as the approach from Quail Road. And as I've mentioned in other meetings before, we see Quail Road as something of a changing experience. It's part of an arrival experience that was very thought about. When we turn in off of 17, it's a very natural experience. It's beginning to navigate topography. You see that it's curvilinear. It's really managing gray coming through a forest, so it'll be heavily shrouded with trees. And then ultimately, it begins to rise and plateau, and it begins to change its form. Whereas earlier, it was curvilinear, and it had groupings of trees around the road, and then vistas into the forest and into nearby wetlands. As it begins to approach the town, it starts to take on more of a town-like form. It becomes straight. The trees start to get closer to the street. It becomes more of a rhythmic planting system. And then we take that curve, and we're level now, and generally level, and we're in our, essentially, the main street of the commons. And then ultimately, that happens again towards the south. It begins to fall, and they navigate through topography. Ultimately, it does that same experience towards the south, eventually through the Slotsburg area. And then the commons, as you can see here, is a combination of... We have 21 buildings, and some of them are, as I mentioned, civic in nature, or fitness or recreation in nature. Some of them are purely commercial, maybe a cafe or a market. And then some of them are mixed-use, where they may have ground-floor commercial spaces and then upper-floor residential spaces, and some are purely residential buildings. So it should be a wonderful mix of activities and people, daytime, people who live there, people who are coming to visit. There could be some coworking space involved. So it really is a place where we see a great gathering spot for the community. And the architecture for the commons, we have really chosen a tradition of the Hudson Valley, one that we see really beautifully represented here in Tuxedo of a contemporary or 21st century version of the Tudor revival, which takes its cues from an earlier revival of the 20th century. It obviously uses more contemporary materials, perhaps larger windows. In terms of the overall design of the interiors, they're going to reflect the sensibility of today, open plans, things like that. But the idea is that these buildings are evocative of the history of Tuxedo, but are clearly in the 21st century. And so one foot in the past, one foot in the present, and looking toward the future. And you can see here that the commons is really a combination of buildings that are articulated vertically through the use of intersecting gables and other devices, they windows, stacked balconies, and so forth. Some of the buildings are joined, so they're individual buildings that are joined at upper levels and have, essentially, which form bridges, and have passages below, which is a hallmark you see in other Tudor revival areas. Forest Hills Gardens is a great example that uses these bridge connections. Scarsdale has examples where there are bridge connections. And so in our community, we have a few of those as well. And in these sections, what you can see is that from the north end to the south end of the commons, there's about a 20-foot gray change between Lower Mountain Lake Road and the Bridal Trail Road. So while it will appear to be fairly level, I think as you're walking around, that 20 feet is managed through drops in the parking areas, which allows us to tuck under parking, in some cases, fully underneath buildings. And where we don't have that gray change, we still do some tuck-under parking, but always preserving the frontage of the buildings along the streets with active uses or with residential, ground-floor residential uses. And this particular section at the top cuts through our main square. You see Building 3, which is a commercial building in the distance, as well as an open pavilion, which we think can be at the site of a farmer's market on the weekend. You can have tables and chairs spilling out there, people eating. Here can be different celebrations throughout the year. We see it as a little gathering spot. It gets good southern light, so it'll get some warmth in the wintertime. And it really is the jewel of our commons. And then cutting through Quail Road, you can see the way the buildings will address the street. And it's essentially a combination of smaller buildings with separations between them, or in some cases, smaller buildings with connections, such as bridges. And then these cross-sections look at the other side of Quail Road at the top, and at the bottom, essentially cutting through Bridal Trail, looking north toward the building that is the sort of frontispiece to the square. Then you can see that as you go to the right, the gray begins to drop off, and there's a series of terraces which connect down to a parking lot behind our fitness building, which is Building 1. And then just to give a little more flavor for the architecture, these are elevation studies for material and value. When I say value, it's really about light and dark. And so it's going to be a combination of stucco siding material. There could be boarded pattern, and then windows that essentially form vertical patterns. You see on commercial buildings, there's a very different storefront design on the ground floor. And then above that, you're seeing patterns which are created by living rooms and bedrooms. And so you get that sort of pattern that is created through the unit plants above. And then these gables that come out and intersect, which is a hallmark of the design of the Tudor revival, against the long gable that's sort of parallel to the street. And what we're suggesting here is that on a fourth-story building, the fourth floor, we're actually rendering more like a dormer floor. And so we're doing that through a change of material. We're doing that through the change of value and the color, relating that color more to the value of what the roof material will be, which is going to be a darker material. Again, all of which harkens back to the traditions of this architecture in the Hudson Valley. Want to talk about the landscape?
I can jump into the landscape.
So the landscape design was very much inspired by the place itself, the natural beauty of the land, but then also the rich heritage of the Gilded Age Tuxedo Park and the components of landscapes of that era. This is the first phase of what we envision as a network of open space, of walkable open space, whereas this is the core development, which would eventually is envisioned to connect to a series of little parks and walkways that connect the whole community. You can walk also into surrounding hiking trails that are in surrounding park areas. The design, the landscape, is following the SMART code in terms of heavy use of native planting, as well as addressing a number of specialty conditions, such as screening parking areas and like salt-tolerant planting use, where we have snow storage. So the arrival experience, driving off of 17, the idea is that you're driving through a part of the natural forest, meadow planting, clusters of trees, it's very native, and also highlighting the existing rock faces that are there, that are another part of the natural amenity of the place. Then transitioning into the town itself and kind of Main Street, a streetscape with tree, shady tree planting, foundation planting under the buildings. Then the center core of everything is this little town square. We envision that as a little hardscape paved plaza with feature paving. And then the idea of a big tree in the middle of it, some sort of big specimen tree that has some sort of idea of a kind of can potentially represent the town as a kind of gathering place under the shade of the central tree. So that's, I think, the summary of the landscape ideas.
Do you have a version of that, Ashley, to project?
I don't know if it's over, Ash. Okay, sure.
I just want to point out that at a later meeting, when this board puts on our architectural review board hat, we'll be looking at the details of the architecture much more closely than we did tonight as the architects further develop those renderings and those designs. We'll be considering specific siding colors, shutter colors, roofing materials, and landscaping also. So by no means is that going to be approved or even reviewed tonight, but we will be doing that at a later date. Hey, Christina.
So Christina, we went through and redesigned some of the roadways to provide off-street parking, and we increased areas of off-street parkings. Namely, we added parking under Building 1.
Excuse me, could you speak a little louder, please?
Sure. We added parking under Building 1, took advantage of the gray change that occurs there. We went through, double-checked, because I know there was concerns about numbers being up, but we went through and double-checked. We have a total of 646 off-street parking spaces. That would be for the residences. And there's 218 on-street parking spaces between the combination of private roads and the public roads. We went through, did snow storage. We calculated that taking out the public roads with the town, that there's still adequate parking for the residences, so there wouldn't be any concerns with residents essentially parking on street, on the public roads that are being plowed. I know there was a comment that came up about the tandem parking under the buildings. So between Buildings 10, 11, 12, 19, and 20, there's a total of 120 tandem parking spaces beneath the buildings, as talked about in other meetings, that those spaces would be intended for the same occupant to use both of those spaces of the whatever unit they're using, so that way two units aren't using a space behind one another, arguing over who's going to go move the car. And then we went through, made sure everything complies with the fire code and truck training. We ran the Tuxedo's largest truck. We confirmed that their aerial truck is the largest one from the other responding areas, so it can adequately turn and access the buildings without causing any issues for mobility. And we have plenty of room to meet the fire code between the 15 to 30 feet within the buildings, for the multi-story buildings that are higher.
I just want to point out, and Ashley, maybe you could trace these as I discuss them. In the commons, there's a mixture of both roads that will be public, dedicated to the town after a period of time, and also private roads that will be maintained, plowed, by the homeowners association of Tuxedo Farms. So there's a mixture of roads within the commons. And if you could just trace which ones are public and which ones are private, Ashley.
Sure. So Quail Road, which is this main road through the commons and through the development, that is going to be a public road. Bridal Trail Road over here, that is going to be a public road. And then there's another road that is not shown as part of this part of the development, would be at a later phase, that heads up towards Tuxedo Park. That's also going to be a public road. Lower Mountain Lake Road, Cortland Place, all of the roads within here, these are all private roads.
And Quail Road actually travels into the village of Slotsburg and exits on Route 17.
Correct.
Further south of the main entrance to Tuxedo Farms, which is in Tuxedo.
It's kind of near Jesse's Bagels.
Okay, thanks, Christina. So you want to call up who's on the... See who's on the...
You could just...
I'll ask the names. KB, if you could unmute yourself, and if you have any questions or comments, you're free to mention them now.
No comment.
All right, thank you. Patrick Dunlevy, if you could unmute yourself and give us your thoughts, comments.
Patrick Dunlevy with Hard Howerton, part of the applicant, no comment.
Okay. Paul Sheehan? He's also on the...
Yeah, hi. I'm another consultant on the team, and so I have no comment.
Okay. And then our final is a phone number, which I can't quite read. If you could unmute yourself and give us any thoughts. At star six, we'll unmute you.
I could probably unmute them myself.
Oh, you want to try? Oh, there it is.
Yeah, hello?
Yeah, so we can hear you.
Yeah, what year are they going to start building Tuxedo Farms?
We're hoping to break ground this, the end of this year, at least on some of the vertical...
Oh, you better... Probably can't hear that.
By the end of the year?
We're hoping to start doing some of the additional site work at the end of the year.
So when will, like, the first building go up for people to live in? What's your guess as to what year that would be?
Probably between two and three years from now. There's a lot of construction time.
For the first occupancy?
Maybe two years.
Yeah, the first occupancy. What's your estimate as to what year that would be?
Sounds like '25?
Roughly '20, '25.
Wow, so next year, there won't be any occupancy there in 2024?
No, there's a lot of construction.
There's quite a bit of construction left to do on the site. Can we add your name, please?
Joe Heckel.
Thank you.
Yeah, I see down by Jesse's Bagels, all the trees. I hike back there, all the trees are down. I'm surprised it'd take that long to have occupancy there. I figured they could get one area open.
It is what it is.
I think I speak for a lot of people. I'm just surprised '20, '25 is... I'm glad you answered. I'd rather have the truth, you know? If that's '20, '25, that's what it is. It just seems a very long time for something that's been in the works for so long.
Fair point. Ken English, anything else that you'd like to bring up? I guess not. Ken English is on the call. Ken, do you have any questions or comments at this point?
No, but thank you very much. I don't have any comments.
And...
It was Ned.
That's Ned. Ken, do you have anything?
He's connecting.
Oh, he's... Michelle, Michelle Lindsay, Town Councilperson, do you have any questions?
Yeah, hi. Good evening, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to just try to further understand the purpose of the public hearing this evening. So as I was reading through the consultants' comments, it's just about the subdivision. And John, I think you summarized it to say that you're changing six lots into 14 lots. And I was just curious what the purpose of that is.
I'll defer to Kelly on that one.
Actually, Michelle, the public hearing tonight is on the subdivision and the site plan and the application for wetlands permit. So those are the public hearings that's being held tonight. The six-lot subdivision... Hold on, I've got my notes here. That is to convert... It proposes to subdivide Section 14, Block 1, lots 34.2, 13.22, 13.2, 14, and 42 into what's shown on the subdivision as proposed lots 1-CS and 1-MU through 13-MU. And that also involves the subdivision of the property to the school.
Right, I remember there was discussion of that the school lot couldn't be dedicated until the subdivision occurred. Okay.
Yep.
All right, so is there any other purpose to the further subdivision of these lots?
Yes, so the subdivision creates the lots for the commons area, and it also creates a separate lot for Quail Road, which will eventually be dedicated to the town. So the commons is broken into several larger blocks. So there's one main block here, which holds several of the buildings. There's another block that would be down south of Quail Road, and another block...
You're not sharing anymore.
Oh, sorry. I'm like pointing on another...
That's okay. I remember. Okay, thank you. So the wetlands approval... Oh, okay, thank you.
So this is one block here.
Uh-huh.
Quail Road is its own lot. This is a block here, and this is a block here. So it's a bulk subdivision.
I see. Okay. There were also comments submitted by the consultants about some portions going into the wetland buffer. Is that why there's a wetland permit approval on the docket? I think it was Valerie.
There is a wetland that's adjacent to the commons area up here that previously we had wetland permits for from the state, and we are maintaining those same buffers from the previous approval. But since those original approvals, I believe that the town changed its wetland code, so now we are seeking a town wetland permit for that as well.
Does that go back to the town board?
No, it's the planning board.
But that is not, and Kelly, correct me if I'm wrong, that is not part of the resolution that we're going to consider tonight, the wetlands.
Correct, it's not part of tonight.
Then that's...
Go ahead, Michelle.
No, I'm sorry. Is that because you need further review of it, or...
Yeah, I think that there's a number of issues, minor issues. If you've read Sean's memo and Valerie's memos, that really needed to be corrected prior to site plan approval. So tonight really would just be the public hearing on all of these items, and then potential consideration of the draft resolution for subdivision. I think site plan, wetland, and potentially clearing a grading when we get to that, that wouldn't be until August's meeting.
Oh, okay.
But the public hearing on it is tonight. So if you have comments on the wetlands and that portion...
But the grading public hearing will be on July 11th.
I thought it was going to be August.
Well, just the public hearing.
No, there's no application.
We thought that. Right before the meeting, I had a conversation with Ashley, after my meeting that I had right with you.
Okay.
We are planning on making a submission on July 21st that has the complete package of responding to all the comments from the town's consultants, as well as any comments that we received tonight, inclusive of the design drawings for the grading permit. And we plan to speak to those on the August 1st meeting.
So then, Tuxedo Farms in no way, shape, or form will be appearing at the July 11th meeting?
Correct.
Okay, understood.
That was... Now you know what I know. I thought they were going to be able to turn around that application in time for you.
Yeah, we needed a little bit more time to respond to all the comments and have a complete package.
Okay. Anything else, Michelle?
No, that's it. I'll just look forward to the reading comments on the wetlands. I guess that's still going to be resolved, so I'll follow that along. So thank you.
And I think Ken, is he connected yet?
He should be.
I think that was our last.
Yes, I don't have any question or comment at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ken. Just want to call... Is there anybody else?
That's it.
Okay. So for the board members' questions, Susan.
I do have just a clarification. So when I read the document for tonight, there was an extra paragraph referring to playgrounds and parks. And it said, you know, there will be... And then the next paragraph was bold italic, and it said, "If there isn't, which there, if there isn't space or room, then there'll be a fee paid to Tuxedo." When did... So does that mean that the playgrounds that we talked about or the meeting areas we talked about in the last meeting are no longer, and there'll be a fee paid instead for other recreation area? Or is that something different?
So the finding that you're referring to is what was in bold italics in the draft resolution. So when you have a subdivision under state law and under the town's code, there is, you either give parkland or you have payment in lieu of. And here, they are proposing parkland and other spaces. proposing parkland and other spaces, but the special permit also requires a payment in lieu of parkland, and the special permit doesn't do it by the number of lots because there's going to be, you know, only a few lots as compared to the number of units, it's actually by the number of units. But I wanted to make sure that the board still made the finding that parkland is deemed necessary based on the number of proposed residents.
Okay, so.
They will be providing some parkland as has been demonstrated, but the fee is also required by the town board's special permit.
I just wanted to make sure that we weren't losing the parkland. Okay, great, thank you.
And it was in bold italics to draw your attention to it, so thank you.
And it did. Anything else, Susan? No, I'm good, thank you.
Bill?
Most of my comments are really for afterwards when we get into the real design.
Chris?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Yeah, one question, and looking at your drawings, I didn't notice any underground electric utilities. Did I just miss them or?
On there.
Are they going to be overhead?
There are underground utilities, but.
There is a drawing of it?
Uh.
I don't recall seeing it.
Yeah, there's, it's on the utility plan, the, the utilities are going to be underground, not overhead.
Has, has that drawing been submitted yet?
Yes.
It has?
Yeah.
Okay, I got to look harder.
It's, it's hard to see, it's a very congested drawing.
Pardon me?
It's hard to see, the drawing's very congested.
Okay.
They can show you.
Remember what she did there? Oh, yeah, it's a C U, I don't know what number it is.
We don't have those memorized, yeah? Just kidding.
I almost forgot.
Is there a street lighting plan included on that?
There, there will be.
There will be a street lighting plan included.
Okay.
You haven't submitted that yet?
Yes.
If you zoom in, you see right by that cul-de-sac, it says T E G.
Yeah, yes, telephone, electric.
I'm on the right sheet.
Go to your left a little bit, by the 512 contour.
Oh, oh, I see it, I see it. Right there.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, she can't move it up.
Sorry.
Have we ever resolved a substation question?
Currently, no, I believe, we, we still have to talk with Orange and Rockland.
Okay. Okay, um, I don't think, uh, there's any more questions, I don't have anything that I haven't had answered, um, so I'll make a motion to close the public hearing, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So Kelly, you want to touch upon the, um, the highlights of your resolution?
Yes, um, so I prepared for you a draft resolution, this is an amended resolution of conditional preliminary and final major subdivision. Um, I made a couple of minor tweaks, I'll just point those out. Um, and the first paragraph where I listed the square footage of the non-residential use, I was very specific, so I put approximately 299,100 square feet, so that, you know, not specific. Um, I also referenced the Town of Tuxedo Town Board amended findings statement in the identification of plans. Um, the application, the amended application was originally filed in or around August 2022, so I didn't date it all the way back to the 2014 original date. I will add a statement in, in your procedural history around this public hearing that, based on the new language that was inserted in the special permit by the town board on Monday, um, this is a subdivision, so it doesn't require preliminary ARB review at this time because no buildings are being approved, so I just want to make that clear. Because of the wording in the special permit, you will have to obviously have, when you do any site plan approval, you'll need at least preliminary ARB review based on the way it's worded, so I just want to note that this, there are no buildings, uh, proposed, so you don't need that. Um, as you brought up, the parkland finding, I put in, and then there are five specific conditions. I don't know if anybody had any questions on those, but before you ask them, I did modify number four. So number four now says, prior to the issuance of any building permits for any lot, the applicant shall obtain site plan and architectural review board approval for such lot as required by the special permit as amended. And then number five, I referenced the negative declaration and it should be the Town of Tuxedo Planning Board Involved Agency findings statement that is dated January 12th of 2023. Um, I can read the other conditions or you guys can let me know if you had any questions or changes.
And as we discussed earlier, um, we don't have to take any action to reaffirm seeker.
That's correct, you already adopted your findings statement as an involved agency.
Okay. We're involved, we're not the lead agency, we're involved, so seeker is resolved.
Seeker's done.
Okay. Any questions on the resolution?
Nope, I'm good.
I never open the regular meeting, is that a problem?
No, you, you, fine, the way it's proceeded is good.
Okay. So Susan, no?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Uh, Bill?
No. I'm good.
So I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the major subdivision, fi- it's a final approval, correct?
It's preliminary and final, yes.
What is the preliminary part? If, if we're doing final, what does the preliminary bias?
Uh, well, so, it goes back to some legal issues about vested rights and preliminary and so preliminary and finals, we just come, it's a long lengthy discussion about constitutional rights, so.
It's a lawyer.
I probably bore most of you to tears, so, just include it in the heading and it makes it more straightforward.
So it's preliminary and final approval?
Yes.
So of, of the subdivision only?
Yes, of only the subdivision.
Only the subdivision tonight, I want to make that clear. So, um, I'll make a motion to approve that, okay?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's approved.
Preliminary.
No.
Finally.
No, no.
But that being said, we would need to, as we were mentioning before, schedule a, what I would recommend is scheduling a public hearing on the clearing and grading for your August 1st meeting, that will be contingent upon receiving that application by July 21st, so that Deborah will get everything published in that beforehand, but.
So I'll make a motion to schedule the grading public hearing for August 1st, right, Kelly?
Yes.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I think there's a couple other little items, but I think that's it for Tuxedo Farms, right? We don't have any other sec- either Scott or Sean, you want to bring anything up at, at this point?
The only thing I'd like to just, uh, let the board be aware of is subsequent to your last meeting, which was June 6th, uh, we've met, both Scott and I have met with the applicant's consultants, uh, on several occasions, so as you asked for, we're working out the technical details and answering any questions that they may have on our written comments.
Yeah, those meetings, I think, have been, uh, very fruitful.
Yes, I agree.
And necessary, I think.
Thank you for allowing them, um, and we found it to be very helpful as well.
Good, good, and I'm sure that there'll be more of those.
As, as the applicant needs, we're available.
Okay, okay. So I think this Tuxedo Farms team can leave, thank you for appearing in person, I think it's easier for all, maybe not you guys, but.
I mean, you're welcome to stay if you're dying to.
I think it's exciting that you're going to.
The Constitution will come to session.
I'm sorry?
The Constitution.
Thanks, it's on.
Only if you need it now. Well, I may find it exciting, many do not.
Try to pull this up, please.
It's okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, take care.
Good day.
So long.
Thank you.
Um, does anybody have any questions on the minutes from the June 6th meeting?
No.
No, 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 no. So I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And really the last piece of business is to schedule yet another public hearing for Skyview Skylights for, um, July 11th, right?
He's already done that, I believe.
Thank you, let me just plot my notes.
I don't know, I would.
It would have been on the 15th.
I didn't see that, was that in the minutes?
That would make sense, but.
I have it in my notes, it's a fact.
All right, so that's, that's scheduled already.
You said it already for July 11th.
July 11th.
Now, we won't, we won't have any resolutions for that meeting because Kelly will be away.
I'll be away, but I'm not sure that that one's ready for it, um, I.
But we'll have the public hearing and we'll see what, uh, comes.
Yeah, um.
I'll be away as well.
Oh, will you be in Alaska?
Yeah, I might not be here.
No, okay.
Will you be in Alaska? Oh, you're gonna, you're both.
I'm gonna be in Alaska.
I'm gonna be in Newport.
Oh.
I've been to Alaska.
I think, uh, I think we do have enough for a quorum at that meeting.
We should, Chris, you said you were not here.
I'm not, I'm not sure yet.
Well, I could send out an email tomorrow, just to kind of confirm.
Yeah, and I won't know until next week.
So that's a question, if there's only, since we're not voting on anything that night, can you have a public hearing without a quorum?
No, because you won't even be able to open the public hearing, and you won't be able to adjourn the public hearing.
Okay.
It should be rescheduled, um.
Well, if, if we don't, uh, we don't have it, we don't have it, so.
So far it's just Bill and Chris potentially that's not here?
Yeah, I.
Hopefully.
Um, I'll have to look at who else might not be able to.
Yeah, I'll, I, I mean, if you want, I'll send out an email tomorrow, just to kind of.
Okay, okay. All right, I don't think there's anything else, is, for anybody, Deborah, can you think of anything that we need additional tonight?
No.
Okay, um, so I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
John, I'll finalize that tomorrow and I'll send it to you by Dr. Smith, then you can be like, okay, I did one. Been 20 years in the making.
Yeah.